We have.
Jay, you're, you're starting the recording on WebEx, right? You have to start the, the WebEx recording. There you go, thanks.
West David.
Boy, it was rainy today, huh? Man.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Number two. Thank you. So, West David, we got it? West David.
I'm ready. Ready seconds. Oh, yeah. Welcome back to the staff.
Well, welcome back to the council.
Yeah.
I think we're gonna start, Jay, we all set? I'm going to call, uh, this, uh, town council meeting, uh, to order. Welcome, everybody, to our town council meeting for Monday, June fourteenth, Flag Day. Uh, and, um, uh, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Valerie DePaolo? Here. William Dietzick?
Here.
Tom Lombardi?
Here.
James Morelli?
Here.
Christopher Palmeri?
Here.
Christopher Pulis?
Here.
Paul Chaplinsky?
Here.
Michael Del Santo?
Present.
Victoria Triano?
Thank you, I am here. Uh, should, let's stand for the prayer, followed by our flag salute. And we'll also offer a moment of silence at the end of the flag salute for our, uh, for our, our military who have died in the line of duty as we gathered for Memorial Day, uh, just, uh, last week, and so, let's, let's remember to do that. We didn't do it last time, so. Uh, go ahead, Val.
Heavenly Father, give us grace tonight to understand that the impact we make upon this community is not just for today, but for the generations who will follow us. Help us to do what is right, and if need be courageous. We commit ourselves, our decisions, and the town of Southernton under your care. Amen.
Amen. Join me for the flag salute, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us have a moment of silence for our fallen, uh, uh, military. Thank you, everyone. May I have a motion on the minutes from the previous meeting?
I'll make a motion to approve, Madam Chair.
Second, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Chris and Mike. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I'll abstain, Madam Chair.
Thank you, I was gonna ask for abstentions. Any other corrections or deletions? Hearing none. Uh, it passes with one, uh, abstention. Right, thank you. Uh, councilperson's communication. Uh, could I, uh, have some communication, please?
Hi, Madam Chair.
Paul?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, Madam Chair, I'd like to just, uh, send out a congratulations to, uh, some of the police officers in the Southernton Police Department on some recent promotions that were announced. Uh, if I can just go through a few of the names, that would be wonderful. Master Sergeant, uh, Steven Shafon being promoted to lieutenant. Uh, Sergeant Brian Lepard being promoted to master sergeant. Officer Justin Burke to, uh, being promoted to sergeant. Officer Matthew Rose to, uh, being promoted to sergeant. And, uh, Officer Kristy Rochette to sergeant, which is, uh, a great honor because, um, the two B sergeant is gonna be the first female supervisor in Southernton Police Department history, so, uh, a, uh, an extra congratulations.
Absolutely.
Is in order there.
That's great, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much, Tom.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I just wanted to, I, I feel like I've done this several times over the last few years, but I wanna send a, a huge congratulations to the Class Double L state champion Southernton Girl softball team. Um, they played in West Haven this past Saturday, June twelfth, and they beat Fairfield Ludlow four to three, um, on a, on a game-winning hit from Jasmine Lasane. So, the softball program is just phenomenal in Southernton, we all know that. Um, and, and I do have some further comments on the softball program later on in the meeting that I would like to share. And I believe, um, Chairwoman Triano is, will be working with some o- other members of the council to present a proclamation to the softball program, um, at a future meeting.
Yes, that is correct.
So, thank you.
Um, Chris Palmeri called me and, and he's working on the proclamation and Val's gonna, awesome. Val, did you play softball in high school?
Um, I did not, no.
No.
No, I played tennis in the spring.
I know that you were very active in, in athletics, so, very good.
So, I'd, I'd like to ask Madam Chair if we could, um, the banquet is, uh, next Tuesday.
Okay.
And it would be really nice, everybody will be there, the players, coaches, parents. Um, I thought it would be really nice if the proclamation could be done at the banquet.
Well, that would be very nice. I, uh, my thought was, and it, I don't care one way or the other, but it would be very nice to invite the softball team here, so that it would be an official kind of town giving of the proclamation. Uh, if...
I just don't know that y- you'll have everybody there on that night for the banquet, and it's a big thing for them, and...
Well, let's, let's you and I talk about it after the meeting, if that's okay. Um, it, it's nice when all the council people are here too, you know?
Right, council members can certainly come for the first few, can come to be at the banquet to present, so...
We'll, we'll talk, but, but we're all in agreement that they, it's well-deserved.
Yeah.
So, however we get it to them, we'll, we'll do it. Very good. Um, anybody else, Mike?
Madam Chair, I have a couple of items.
Sure.
I had the honor, along with you and Mr. Chaplinsky a couple of weeks ago, to go to the Memorial Day event down at the American Legion. And, um, I understand that they went out to all of the town parks early in the morning, like every half an hour, seven-thirty, eight o'clock, eight-thirty, in all the town parks, and did a little ceremony at each park. Then they had a wonderful ceremony down, ceremony down at the American Legion, which, uh, is always, um, an excellent time. Uh, it's, uh, very solemn, they do a great job down at the American Legion, uh, between that and Veterans Day, I go a couple of times a year. Uh, I'm sorry, it was the cemeteries, not the parks. Did I say parks? Yeah, cemeteries. Sorry, big difference.
It's okay.
But, yeah, so, uh, so that was wonderful. And then, uh, one last thing, the Southernton Chamber of Commerce is having their Restaurant Week, uh, from June twentieth to June twenty-sixth. You can go on the Southernton Chamber of Commerce website and find out, there's, uh, close to two dozen, to two dozen restaurants that are gonna be participating. Make sure we shop local and eat local for the Southernton Restaurant Week.
Very good. Yeah?
Madam Chair, I did forget to mention one thing. Um, a, a few weeks ago, I, I did receive a call from a resident, and I, I did promise that I would bring the, uh, the conversation up, and I know that we've had lengthy discussions about the auto thefts going on in the state, and what, what could the town do, what could the town not do, and, and the resident was fully aware of our limited, um, capacity to, to take action. But, he wanted me to share with the council that, uh, his, this person on, on their street, their, the neighbors, they're very frustrated. Um, actually, a state trooper lives on the street, and there's been a, an, and, a minor who has, um, gone through cars, and they've been caught and released four times. So, I, I expressed that we can't really do anything else, other than continue the conversation. And I think we're all in agreement that there's a problem out there, and we should continue that conversation, um, not just, you know, because we did a proclamation a few mon- months ago to the state, but, um, i- it's an ongoing issue, and we wanna encourage residents to lock your doors, um, take valuables out of their cars, all the stuff that we can control. We wanna continue to promote that. So, um, I just wanted to get that out there from the residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Chris?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I'll just, a quick follow-up with what Tom just said. I, I mean, there's, th- this is an ongoing problem, and there's, uh, uh, we've said at this, uh, on this dais, or via Zoom, that there's three things we could do. Promote awareness, give our police force, our local police force, more capacity to deal with it, more patrol people, and we could, um, engage our state legislatures, legislators. We have not done that yet. We had a meeting that got canceled. I think that we need to communicate that, w- we need to get these state legislators involved. We need to get them here. Okay? We said we're gonna do that.
Yep.
All right? And then, and then, then they canceled, or it was canceled.
Well, they were in session at that time, and that was one of the reasons.
The perfect time, the perfect time to engage them, so they could bring it, bring, bring information to us when it's fresh. So, um, those are the three things, though. I think that we need to continue to message from this council.
It's extremely frustrating for them, I know, up at the state, because they hear the same phone calls we do, they talk to the same constituents that we do. So, it is, it's very frustrating.
I, I just, I'd like to, I'd like to see them, e- even after the session, which is not as ideal, I'd, I'd like to see that, that, some follow-through on that meeting.
Yeah.
Um, the one thing I had prepared that I wanted to bring forward, uh, we also all got a, um, email, I think it was today, from a resident, from Mr. Nick Rinaldi, about, um, the wildlife challenges they're having in his neighborhood on, uh, Farming Berry Drive. And, um, today, I, I had some time, I, I looked through, he, he provided a lot of wealth of information, a, a letter describing several close calls, s- some, some anecdotes from people in his neighborhood involving children. He had, uh, multiple newspaper articles, several, uh, ordinances from different communities around Connecticut as examples of what people are doing. I, and I, and I, I don't know if that i- i- is, those ordinances, or the language in those ordinances is the path we need to follow. But I, but, Madam Chair, maybe this council can instruct our ordinance committee to take a look at this. I don't know, I thi- we could do that, Bill, right?
Well, I think that, uh, in, in Mr. Rinaldi's case, we, I've had our, uh, animal control officer last year to go out.
Sure, yeah.
And there's a, a lot of variables in that situation. Um, and so, uh, at that time, we felt that it was better left the way it is, because there were so many variables involved, uh, after our animal control officer investigated.
So, uh, Madam Chair, if, if I can, sending town staff up to take a look at something is different than considering policy.
Thank you for that, yes, I, I'm aware of that.
And so, I, I just think it's, um, heck, they put together a petition, and, with a lot of thoughtful information. It, we have an ordinance committee. Why can't they do a quick landscape analysis of communities like Southernton and, um, and get back to the resident with, like, a, a rationale for, or for not policy? I don't know what the answer is.
It's not appropriate.
Okay, yeah, you know what? I, we're gonna give you an opportunity to speak, thank you, during couns- during public communication, thank you.
I just wanted to respond real quick. So, I don't think the procedure work, I mean, I am the chair of the ordinance committee, I don't think I can just take issues up, um, there'd be a lot of power, but I think it comes from the council, or the chair, to the committee, is that correct?
Yes.
It goes, it goes from the council, the town attorney, and the town attorney is the staff person who staffs the ordinance committee, that's correct.
So, um, I, I, I don't know, I, I think out of respect for those residents, maybe we can start that process. I, I'd like to suggest that. I, I, I think it's worthy of, 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 the, following that process.
Yeah, well, that, that would be fine, we can discuss it a little more later if we want to, and then we can decide if we're going to go forward. And I, I'm not prepared yet to refer it to the ordinance committee this evening. But, um, certainly, uh, we can discuss it further, and then we can come to a consensus on that.
Okay.
Okay, very good, thank you. Anybody else? I just have a couple of, Val, go ahead.
So, the, um, I have a few things. I just wanna mention the, the pride events, um, were very successful. The flag raising ceremony, I just wanted to thank Councilor, uh, Dietzick and Councilor Palmeri, um, for being there at the, uh, flag raising ceremony, um, and showing support. And, um, wanted to thank the town manager again, uh, for all his help, and his staff, and I wanted to thank Annette Turnquist again for, uh, her staff and, and all her help. Um, the second thing is the, um, the Martin Luther King, uh, mural project is moving forward, um, and they've gotten quite a bit of, uh, numbers regist- registering for the community information session. So, that information session is this Wednesday night at five-thirty. Uh, it's at SOCA. You can register, you could, um, attend if they haven't filled the spots yet, or you can, um, participate virtually. Um, so, and, and I believe the Rise Up Organization will be there, um, this Wednesday to talk about, you know, how the community, um, can have input and participation, um, in creating the mural.
Okay, very good, thank you.
And, um, yeah, the third thing is, I, um, I was able to attend the, uh, the softball game, and, um, it, it's just, it's such a testament, um, to this program, that, um, they have been to the state finals twenty-four times, and they have won nineteen of those state titles. So, it was an unbelievable game, uh, down three-two going into the bottom of the seventh, and on a walk-off, uh, by Jazz, um, they win the game four-three, um, just, you know, what, um, Fairfield Ludlow is a very good team, just the way it should be for a, a final. So, um, yeah, just absolutely great. I would like to give a special thank you to Chief Daley and, and Deputy Chief Palmeri, because I called them as soon as the game was over, and asked if they coordinate a, um, a police escort, you know, from the highway to the high school, and, um, and they did that. So, they, um, that was really nice that they did that. The girls and the coaches really appreciated it.
That was great, that's great, yeah, very good.
So, yeah, good, good stuff.
Okay, Chris, do you have anything?
Yes, I do. Um, a couple, um, a couple items to share. Um, first of all, for residents, graduation is this Friday. Um, so, congratulations to all our graduating seniors. I don't know where this, this year went, but, um, graduation will be at the high school this year. Somewhat normal ceremony, not totally no- returning to normal, but, um, a little bit closer than, than certainly last year. Um, if anyone's interested, the time is different, it's an hour earlier than in the past year, so that's important to know for the, the graduation ceremony at the high school on, um, Friday. Also, to honor our graduating seniors, um, for the second time, um, there will be a senior graduation parade tomorrow, um, starting at five PM from the high school. This is to honor our graduating seniors as well. Um, some of us may know some graduating seniors, and will probably be part of that, uh, event tomorrow. So, again, congratulations to our seniors, those are some great events. Speaking of seniors, I had the pleasure of attending, along with, um, Val and Vicky, um, and we were honored, um, for the first time to present, on behalf of the entire town council, to our graduating seniors that are joining, uh, a branch of the military.
Yes.
Um, so, there were five members this year. Um, this, this took place at the Back Nine on May twenty-seventh. Um, and again, on behalf of the entire council, we presented council citations to Jacob Cipriano, who's joining the Air Force Academy, Jackson Gilroy, who's joining the United States Air Force, Hunter Massiokas, who's joining the United States Navy, Jan Velislanko, who's going into the Air National Guard, and Alexa Zak- Zakinski, who's, um, going into the United States Army, U.S. Military Academy at West Point. So...
Two, two, um, going into training, and, and being a woman going into West Point is quite a, quite a wonderful thing.
It was pretty prestigious. So, again, on behalf of the council, we presented them citations, and it was, it was great to honor them then, and they'll, of course, be recognized for graduation. Um, and, and last, um, I'd like to once again just congratulate Superintendent Cannellin, who attended his last Board of Ed meeting. Um, I'd write in his place last Thursday, it was their first in-person meeting, but that was his last meeting as the superintendent of schools for, um, Southernton Schools, so congratulations to him and his retirement.
Yeah, that, I, it was great to be there, too.
Oh, that's right, you were there, that's right.
There were the accolades and everything, it was terrific, yeah. We certainly do wish, uh, Mr. Cannellin the very best, and his wife, and, uh, and, uh, best wishes for the upcoming superintendent, so it's great. I just have a couple of things, I was honored to be, um, at the Connecticut Chiefs of Police Foundation at the AquaTurf, and welcomed them to Southernton on behalf of, uh, the entire community. It was, uh, quite an event, there were over three-hundred-and-fifty police chiefs and their designees, um, many tables and everything. And, um, also, I had the opportunity to be with the Unico, as they honor the top twenty-five, uh, graduating seniors, as their tradition every year, at the AquaTurf. That was, uh, wonderful, and, uh, very, very, uh, it was just, it makes your heart good to see all of these great things happening and happening. I, I also want to let everybody know, we, uh, in terms of John DeMello, uh, Mrs. DeMello contacted the office, and we wanted to dedicate the, um, the Veterans, uh, uh, Office to John, but we wanted to make sure that, uh, his son was available. And so, she requested that we do it on July sixteenth, which is a Friday, please, everybody put it down, July fifte- sixteenth, rather, which is a Friday at two o'clock, and, uh, his son will be here, and, uh, the plaque is being made, and, uh, we will, uh, we will honor John for all of his diligence and his heart and compassion for our veterans, uh, o- over the years. And, um, it was his passion, and it, uh, carried over his whole life, it was just amazing.
Madam Chair, did you say two PM?
Two PM, yes. So, I think that's all I have, um, good stuff going on. Thank you, everybody, for participating so much in the community, it's terrific to, to, uh, have that opportunity to represent the council in all different aspects of our lives. So, all right, let's move, uh, anything else? We're gonna just move right in, uh, to our energy consultant presentation, uh, item number four.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
So, thank you, Mr. Town Manager.
Okay, uh, I'd like to, before I introduce, obviously, Annette Turnquist, our Director of Public Works, as most of you know, uh, we have had a contract with, uh, with two separate, uh, energy consultants, where this is the second one we've had. Uh, every year, we try and update you on that, obviously, last year was a little bit difficult with our virtual meetings, but, uh, this is the first one we've had probably in about fourteen months. So, we wanted to update you on our energy projects, where they are, or the up-to-expectations. So, uh, Mrs. Turnquist will start off, and, uh, we have our energy consultants on WebEx. You got the...
Good evening. It's nice to see all of you in person collectively, I've seen each of you here and there, but this is nice, it almost feels normal. As Mark mentioned, we have an energy update for you tonight, we're joined virtually by Alberio Energy. Um, I believe they've been our consultant for three years now. Um, specifically, we have Matthew Wheatley, and I believe we also have Laura Bacon, I think I see her on the screen up there. Um, and they're going to discuss with you our electric, natural gas, and fuel supply. Um, they're gonna get into the performance of our solar, our energy performance contracting project, our biopower, and also our fuel cell. And then finally, they'll, they'll touch on future considerations. We'll begin their brief presentation, and then we'll have time at the end for questions. Thank you.
Jay, do you need to do anything?
Okay. Matt, can you hear us? Can you share our screen? And you might be muted.
Laura's nodding, but Matt's not.
He's fine.
He's good?
He's not, yeah, he's not muted. And, can you hear the person?
This one, right here. She gave us a thumbs up, so I think she can hear us, okay?
Yeah, but she's still muted. So, she's gotta unmute herself. She's gonna share his screen with you guys.
Okay. Can he hear us talking to him through this? How does he hear us?
He, he should be able to hear us. Matt, can you hear us?
Yep. He can hear. But we can't hear him.
Can't hear him, but I don't know why he's on, on his phone.
Does he think the voice is coming through his phone?
I don't know, I don't know what he thinks. Cause he's on WebEx. Matt, can you speak?
I don't know if he's talking to us or talking on the phone.
Yeah, he's not muted, so he should be able to talk to us. We don't hear you, Matt.
Jay, how about, do you have to unmute the, the host line?
Laura, can you hear us? Can you, can you call Matt?
Sounds like it's a problem on our side.
Okay, she's calling Matt, maybe. Cause I don't know if he's hearing us or hearing this phone conversation.
Well...
Oh, he does hear us.
He shouldn't need his phone, though.
Chris, something's wrong with our speaker, did you hear?
We're not hearing you, though, Matt. Not hearing either one of them.
Doesn't work for two people, yes. I don't get it. Fresh air. Well, we'll have to move it to the next meeting.
Can he, uh, can he call in on WebEx?
I tried that.
Okay.
He was on his phone.
That's the, that's the end of my knowledge.
Either one can talk, that's the problem, right?
Oh...
Something's wrong with our speaker setting.
The host anymore.
Jay, I can hear you guys talking, I'm on the line now.
Yeah, did you take a, out of host role away? Cause I'm not host here anymore.
Nope, no, I see.
Yeah, it says you're the host.
Ah, yeah, you know what? When I called in, it, it switched it over.
Is that anything to do with it? I can have him call my cellphone.
I hear somebody's off in there.
I don't know why he's not coming through here. He just ended the presentation, I think, Paul.
It looks like it kicked us out, Jay, why don't we just re-log in?
Well, I don't wanna waste a whole lot of time if we can't... We can move it.
Let's, let's go on and come back, maybe? Kick it.
Try a little more login.
We'll just give it another minute, see if we can...
And Jay, how, can you?
We could try that. Kick me out of the meeting.
So, Jay, is that you, right now, that's in?
Yeah, but I need to be made host, though.
Okay, I'll do that for you right now. Okay, then you have to go do the back room as well? No?
Yeah, the livestream is over now, too.
It didn't, it didn't go, Jay. You put a Y in there instead of...
Yeah, that's fine, it doesn't matter.
Oh, okay.
I don't know why we're not hearing them.
Let's continue the, the meeting.
Jay? How about that?
Yep.
That plug in the back?
I, you...
That was in the, uh, computer, Jay?
Jay, Jay will continue to work on it, Madam Chair, why don't we continue with the meeting?
Yes, let's continue, and, um, uh, we apologize for the technical problems, but, uh, we, we, we can't really spend much more time on this. We'll try to get them in if we can, but not, if not, we just have to move on. So, let's move on to the sport, the reports of special committees, open space, please.
Yes, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, I had four items on open space. The first is that the, uh, the Leaf Program has its summer CSA signups up and running, so if you are looking to get your share of vegetables for the summer, uh, now's the time to sign up on the Leaf's, uh, website. A shout-out to the Recreation Department and, uh, Mr. Dave LaPray, who is working with, uh, Bradley Mountain, uh, to bring a, a goat walk-through to two or three of our open space parcels, so more info to come on that in the future, but, um, we're in communication, and we hope to have some dates here for the summertime by the next meeting.
So, it'll be like an event?
Yep, there'll be an event there where, uh, people can sign up and go on a trail walk, uh, see the goats, pet the goats, correct. Yes. So, um, we know for sure we're gonna do it at, at the...
Be fun.
Yeah. So, it's nice, a good partnership with a local, uh, local organization. Uh, the third item is that, uh, we have a local Boy Scout, Mr. Mike Osuli, who made a presentation at the last open space meeting to, uh, do a, an Eagle Scout project to restore the fence at the Pleasant View Open Space Parcel, the garden next to, uh, DePaolo. And so, the, the project was passed, uh, by the open space, so by the fall time, we expect the work to begin once it goes through, uh, the final review with town staff. So, it should be nice, uh, right now, the, the fence is in a little bit of disrepair, uh, we have a little bit of chain-link fence along the row, we have a little bit of wooden fence, it's in, uh, poor condition. Uh, so hopefully, by the end of, uh, this season, we'll have a nice restored fence, and we'll have, uh, we'll be helping a, um, uh, Boy Scout with a, with a project to become an Eagle Scout. So, great project there. And then the last one is, uh, a few shout-outs. Um, it's been a little bit in the making. Uh, Chris, Chris knows we've been trying to get a shed that was donated, um, to the DePaulo Garden Club. And, uh, it was a great partnership with the Suddington High School, uh, program. So, the students and the teachers there who were involved in, uh, building that, putting it together at the high school, which was more than a year ago now, a year and a half ago. COVID slowed us down on getting it to, uh, to the, its final spot. But, um, so again, a special thank you to Suddington High School staff and the students who donated their time and energy to, uh, to put that together. To Annette and the Town Highway and Parks Department, who helped put the base, uh, at the, uh, Community Garden there, or the, the, uh, the garden at Pleasant View, to ensure that we had a safe place to put that and that it would, uh, meet the proper requirements. Um, a couple other extra thank yous to, uh, Brian Merrick and Merrick Construction, who helped us, um, ensure that we had the right equipment to move it to the location and to the Suddington Police Department for, uh, providing an escort down Pleasant Street as we, uh, moved the, um, the unit to, uh, the location next to DePaulo. So, a lot of thank yous to all those people who were involved.
Excellent. That was awesome.
Yes.
It's great. Terrific. Thank you.
If I could just, if I could just add to that. One other person that we need to thank is Paul.
Yeah.
Um, because, because, um, Paul, y- you know, used some connections. I know, I thank you, Annette, for your work, too, but there was some complications with our own town, um, staff being able to move it. So, Paul reached out through connections he had to be able to move the ten, move the shed. So, Paul, I wanna thank you for your efforts on, on getting it there. If you haven't seen it, it looks fantastic. It really looks great seeing a structure back on that property. The teacher that I, that I wanna thank, that I had coordinated with in the first place, his name is Dave Marchessani, so I wanna thank him because he's a construction teacher, and he worked with his students, and it has been a couple of years, unfortunately, cause COVID really. It was completed before COVID, actually, so, um, thank you to him. And Ed Polcock III and his foundation for making the donations. He donated, uh, the funds for all the supplies to provide to the high school students in order to build the shed. So, um, it, it really, really is great.
Yeah, it took a lot of people to get it.
Absolutely.
But it, it, everybody's got a little bit of ownership on it, which is really great.
And all on their own time and their own dime, Paul. And people don't realize he'd take a Saturday away from his family to do this. So, thank everyone, but Paul was there first thing.
And you too, Chris.
Yep, both of you guys. Great.
Great. Uh, we're gonna move on to, uh, Public Works.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. We had a, a pretty involved meeting. Uh, one of the very important, uh, topics at the meeting was the intersection of West Street and Prospect Street. As some may know, there was a pretty bad accident there a few weeks ago, and it's been, uh, an area of concern for a long time. So, uh, we discussed it at length, and we batted around lots of ideas about possibly putting a light in. And we are actually, uh, Mr. Pulis and Mr. Chaplinsky asked, actually, uh, thought, uh, maybe to get some information from the state for some input and analysis, so we're gonna be getting some information from them. But the chief made it pretty clear that, um, it's, you know, it's a normal intersection. You know, and if people follow the traffic laws and stopped at the stop sign and didn't speed and slow down, there wouldn't be as many accidents, but that's easier said than done. We all know that. The police department was able to put some reflectors up on the stop signs. So, at night, folks coming to the intersection of Prospect and West would be able to see the signs a little better. And, you know, it's, it hits, hits home for Mr. Pulis, cause he lives close by. And he's, he's heard the screeches, he's seen the accident, so, um, we're definitely looking into it to see what more we can do. You know, we are gonna be getting some information back from the state, uh, some, some of their input and analysis for that. So, thank you to Mr. Chaplinsky, Mr. Pulis, for their input, and for the chief, uh, looking into that for us. And Annette is gonna do some work on that as well. Bulkways Transfer Station, uh, we are, you're now allowed to mail in the forms, uh, to get your transfer station sticker. They've been updated, um, for new stickers, not just renewals. So, Annette's working on that. Um, you know, there, you have to go on the website to find out exactly what you have to do. You have to mail in a self-addressed stamp envelope, and there'll be, and, uh, you know, a copy of your license and registration, and you'll be able to get a pass back to you. We did have a household hazardous waste, uh, drop-off on June fourth, and it went, it ran pretty smoothly. There was one hundred and eighty cars, no real problems. It was busy at the beginning, as they usually are, but it kinda trickled out by the end of the event. And so, Annette reported that there was no huge problems. I wanna remind everyone that Suddington does offer, um, a sidewalk program. So, if people are planning on redoing their sidewalks, uh, then the town will, uh, pitch in some of the money to, uh, to assist in, in the construction of sidewalks. And, uh, homeowners can opt, uh, to do the work themselves, and then materials are forty percent reimbursable, uh, by the town. The trail from Lazy Lane to the town line has been, uh, a, a topic of conversation for months now. Uh, we're now, you know, the Department of Transportation, unfortunately, has been holding up a lot of these events, as I've been, as I mentioned in meetings past, but they're expecting a street, a spring 2022 construction for that part of the trail. Plans for safety improvements, same story. Uh, Department of Transportation's holding things up a little, but they're anticipating a two thousand, a late 2021 bid process with a spring 2022 construction. I know that some people are excited about that, so, you know, the pandemic really put a damper on a lot of these projects, but, um, we're hoping in the next year, at the end of this year and early next year, we'll be able to get some construction done. And I am hap- happy to announce that, um, there is, uh, equipment on the site at Spring Street and Queen Street, and so, it's coming to fruition. I'm hoping that, hopefully, by our next meeting, I'll have more to report, but it looks like it's happening. There's heavy equipment on the property, and so, we're hoping that, uh, it says here that they anticipated the work to begin last Monday, and I don't think it did. I was, I drove by this weekend, but I did see lots of heavy equipment on there, so hopefully, this week, they'll get rocking on it, and we'll take it from there. Any questions from anyone? Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much, Mike. Very good. Apple Harvest Festival.
Um, we have a couple, we have a, a couple updates. Um, first of all, we are very excited to be back in force for this coming up fall. To date, we have thirty-seven returning vendors and fifteen new vendors waiting to come in, so that's exciting to hear. We are, again, looking for residents' input for our festival theme this year, which is a little different. So, um, the information should go up on the website sometime, hopefully, this week. So, if you're interested in submitting a proposal for the theme, um, please reach out to either Dave LaPray or Giulia Bardinelli in the Recreation Office. They, again, they should be putting information on the website this week. The most exciting news is we confirmed at our meeting last week, the parade is on. So, we are, we are a go for the parade. We're excited about that. That's, that's huge, cause we, we weren't quite sure with, with everything happening. And we also are pleased to announce we have our national, um, band set, and that will be set for, um, Saturday, October ninth, on the main stage. And the name of this year's national act is a band called Vertical Horizon. Um, they were found in the early nineties. They're most famous for their number-one single, Everything You Want, which sold over two million copies, um, and it captured the number-one spot on Billboard's Hot One Hundred and Adult Top Forty chart. So, again, we're excited to welcome, um, a national, uh, band again this year, as well as, um, proud to say we're able to continue the parade.
Great. Chris, are you gonna do the light show again this year, or not?
The light show, unfortunately, is off for this year.
Well, okay.
You know, we, it, we had to make a decision between the parade and fireworks are on, and the parade is on, the national, the national band is on, the one thing we had to, unfortunately.
I understand, I understand. We, it's just coming out of COVID. I think you guys are doing a great job. That's terrific. Everybody's excited, I'm sure.
Madam Chair, do you want me to sing a couple bars of that tune?
I know. I, I wrote it down, so I could listen to it later.
No, Linda, I get no respect.
Oh, that's so funny.
I'd like to hear Mike sing a couple.
Maybe the band will let you up there.
Maybe another time, or we'll get him up on stage with the band.
I'm excited. I love that band. I really do. Yeah, they're, they're great.
Okay, Sewer Committee. I'm sure that's as exciting as the.
I know.
Apple Harvest Festival committee.
Any, any national acts?
No.
At the Sewer Committee?
We had our, uh, our onsite tour, finally, um, after COVID, and it was pretty impressive. The sewer plant is, my understanding is operational. And anyone who's been to Rec Park or been to the plant, you can't avoid that there is a smell. Um, and I can tell you that some of the improvements they made, that it's not at all like it used to be. And that may agree with me. Um, they say it has an earthy smell, which I guess I kinda, when I smelled it, earthy. Well, in a serious note, though, I mean, it's a large, large, large capital project, and it appears to be working, and my understanding is that, and some, please correct me, but, deep is being put unnoticed, and I guess that means there're gonna be some inspection, which is the final, final act. So, it's coming along, and hopefully, come September, they're gonna send out all the invitations.
That's great. Anything else?
That's all I have.
No national band?
No national band, no light show.
Uh, no light show. All right.
Always the lineman, though, right?
Um, anybody else have any, uh, reports on their committees? We're gonna move right along and go to the Town Manager's report, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just wanna check, um, Annette or Jay, do we, do we have them back or no? This is a natural pause in the meeting, but otherwise, I'll go.
Matt, can you try to say something?
Oh, I hear him through you there. We can, we can hear him?
Still not getting him.
They're on. It's just our audio in this room. I can put my speaker onto this, if you want.
No, let's have it, let's have it done right.
They're on. I can hear them.
They're on, on us.
Audio's working on the thing, so, so his audio. Jay, how about that connection in the computer?
Yeah, that's on mine, too.
While they're doing that, Madam Chair, with your permission, I'll move forward.
Yep.
Um, this is the Board of Finance's minutes. We have a very, very busy meeting, a very productive meeting. Let me start, uh, with the first item. Uh, we had the public hearing on the bond for sixteen point nine million dollars for the library. Uh, the public hearing was put on. Uh, the Board of Finance voted unanimously to send it back to the council favorably, uh, which, of course, will be part of your public hearing, which you'll have on the twenty-eighth of this particular month. The next item I have, uh, is the second half of our, uh, capital budget for budget reallocation. Uh, if you call it your last meeting, you approve the, uh, one, one million dollars, which was the first part of it. This is the second part, which is mainly the revenue side, and that's six hundred and forty thousand dollars. And that goes toward the items that are already set forth in your capital budget.
Does anybody have any questions on that item?
Uh, the next item is relatively new. This is our third year doing it, but let me go slowly with you. Um, as you know, last year, uh, the Board of Education had approval for carryover monies from their, from the budget that is currently, uh, expiring. That particular amount is one million eight hundred fifty-five thousand and change. What they, uh, did at the Board of Finance meetings, they gave the list, which you all have, of the capital items and other items that they're gonna be using the money on. How this works is the same way it worked two years ago, when they had the five hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar carryover money, which is they set forth the projects they're going to be doing, and as each project comes through, it's signed off through the finance office and my office, and the projects get done. So, that's, that's for the fiscal year, uh, that we're currently in. Uh, next fiscal year, they've asked for and received permission from the Board of Finance to carry over up to two percent, which is what the statutory amount is. We won't know the exact amount until they, uh, come to us in September, like they did in the last previous two years, and they're gonna be able to give us a number, uh, for which, and a rough, a rough idea of what the items are gonna be. But they don't give us the, usually don't give us the items until the spring meeting this year. So, uh, that's also very important. So, uh, any questions on that? I know this is relatively new to us. This is our third year with the Board of Education, but as you know, the town has been doing this for years and years to its budget reallocation system. Happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay, Val, why don't you go first?
So, Mark, just a quick, just a question about the proposed projects. Those are projects that have been already, they've already put these out there. They didn't just come up with these because there's money.
No. These projects are the ones that we approved, um, last year for the one point eight million dollars. That was last, last June is when they, they, they asked for the carryover, and then they gave us some of these, the projects, uh, for last September. They're finalizing the projects. The Board of Education voted on these particular projects to use for the one point eight. That's the money, like I said, from the, uh, from the fiscal year last. The money that worked, that you're approving to carry over for, for into next fiscal year is the money from this fiscal year, and that's up to two percent, which is, uh, even, even my math can figure that one out. It's a hundred million dollar budget, so it's probably around, somewhere around two million dollars.
But we're voting on both?
Yes. The specifics of the second one will come to you again like we, like this, but it won't be until probably this time next year.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Clarification, Madam Chair. Mark, I, I got the number on the Board of Ed carryover for this current cycle. What was the government one again?
I'm saying.
The town government carryover? What are we anticipating it's gonna look like?
Our carryover?
Yeah.
Well, we do budget reallocation prior to, so ours is about one point eight million dollars, which is the, like I said, the one point, one point one last meeting and six, six hundred and forty. But we don't call that the budget reallocation. Nothing's being carried over. We're actually using the money now. We're gonna be buying that stuff.
It's six hundred for the reallocation.
Six hundred and forty this time, and last time you did the one million. So, if you look in your, in your capital budget, it's about one point seven, one point eight million dollars.
Thanks. Madam Chair, thank you. Uh, I, I do have some, some comments, um, or, uh, requests for follow-up for the Town Manager, for you, Madam Chair. Um, and this was an issue that, that we spoke about, uh, on the council. I guess we call it the council screen a few months ago. Um, and this circles back to the, the softball program at the high school. Um, for those who missed the conversation a few months ago, on page one hundred ninety-three of the fiscal year, um, twenty-one, twenty-two budget, there outlines a situation that occurred where the State Department of Education found that the facilities at the softball fields at the high school are not satisfactory. So, when I looked at this budget, um, the non-lapsing fiscal year twenty account, I continued to see athletic facility upgrades. And I said, why isn't the softball on this list? Now, I do thank the Town Manager for, for putting two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars in this upcoming year's budget, which we all supported, which was, which was a fantastic step in the right direction. But I guess I'm, I'm, I am getting a little bit impatient, because in the budget, it says that there's a master study December of two thousand twenty. I think that this council needs to see that, and we need to, and I, and I know us nine on this dais has publicly supported this project. We actually don't have a choice. But I think we need to prioritize this in a faster way. We need to see this study, and we need to, we need to fund it appropriately. And, you know, this dais is gonna change in November, but I, and I'm confident that both the local Democratic Party and the local Republican Party will make this a cornerstone of the, the next few years, because, uh, you know, I'm, I'm tired of seeing other improvements to, to our facilities, and we're, we're waiting. I don't know. It's, it's, it's been at least five years now, so. Through you, Madam Chair, I ask the Town Manager to, uh, report back to the council on when we can expect to see the study that's being done.
Madam Chair, if I can, the, I, I met with Steve Riss, our A.D., and the, the master study is, is there. Right? I don't know if the Town Manager's aware of that, but, um, you can, you can sit. I mean, I'm gonna go up and sit and, and go through it.
Good.
So, the master study is there. You can, you know, contact Steve, sit, look through the master, um, study. It's all there as to what's being, um, you know, what, what is being proposed and, um, what, what they're looking to do going forward. I wholeheartedly, um, agree with you, Mr. Lombardi. It's, it's forty years late.
Yes.
Is the way I look at it. So, um, the two hundred and fifteen thousand is great. It's going to, you know, it's going to throw the softball field a little closer to what it should be, but, you know, Title IX was nineteen seventy-one, and every time additions and, you know, dugouts, lighting, um, batting cages, fencing, uh, scoreboard, you know, restaurant, any, anything that's on that baseball field, it should have been, no matter how the money was raised.
Right.
The law said the, the girls should have had the same comparable.
Right.
So, um, it's, you know, we, we absolutely need to be doing this. And I, I think, uh, it's, it's really sad that the baseball program has had beautiful facilities, and now their facilities are rundown, but they already got to have all those facilities. And the girls have not had, um, any of that, and, um, you know.
Thing about, the, the, we did have a meeting months ago with the superintendent and the A.D., and they were, I'm not sure, it's, I know they have the preliminary one. I'm not sure it's finalized yet.
I don't, I don't believe it's the final.
Yeah, it's not the final one, but I do know that, um, that they're gonna get it finalized, and I'll certainly get an update for you, just don't have for the whole council. That's issue number one. Issue number two is the funding part of it. Obviously, if it's taken as one project, it'll be a referendum number. It's not gonna be below a referendum number. So, yeah, I, I do know there's preliminary studies. I don't believe it's finalized yet, um, but it will get finalized, cause the question is, is that, uh, the, the people are gonna be looking at the, they're not looking at the fields. They're looking at the whole property and saying, okay, what can we do on the whole property? So, it isn't as generic as, okay, how are we gonna improve the baseball field? Or how are we gonna improve the softball field? It's how are we gonna get the best out of the land we have? Because I, I believe we all figure that the land itself isn't gonna get any bigger. That's, that's about it for us. Um, there isn't land to buy, and that's about it. So. That's, that's about it for us. Um, there isn't land to buy, and that's about it. So, that I believe is gonna be the finalized part of the study. And then the most important thing is, is specking it out, doing the scope, and then getting the money for it. So.
Right, and I agree with that. Um, but, you know, Mr. Lombardi's raising a good point. It's, it is all, it's the whole complex that's being looked at, and there's a lot of issues with the entire complex. There's issues with the tennis courts and, uh, um, the track, the, the bleachers, you know, the football stadium. Um, all of the backfields have been left, and nothing's been done. So, it, it truly isn't the, the, just the softball field. But the discrepancy and the fact that we've been in violation of the Civil Rights Act and Title IX, um, and ADA, you know, for, for a number of years, and many town councils did nothing about it.
Right.
So, everybody turned their, their head and said, you know, it's just the girls out there. Let them go out there and, and do their thing. And, and they win nineteen titles. So, I, I agree. It's, it's the specs of everything. Pardon? But it's gonna, it's gonna hopefully stay in the same spot, because they're, they don't wanna move it.
Just to add, just to add a positive note to this, uh, Mr. Cannell and Mr. Rissler are, they have worked on it. They've, they've got, they got the resources to do this study. Um, we, the town, have helped out a little bit with two hundred and seventeen thousand dollars, two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Uh, but the fact of the matter is, I agree with everything that's said here, but the fact of the matter is, is also we need to, uh, I'll get an update on where we are. But you have to look at this thing as, as holistically. You have to look at the whole project, and then how are we gonna fund it? So, I agree with everything that's said here, but I also agree that we are moving in the right direction. We've had a superintendent and an A D and a prior A D, uh, both very, very serious about making this happen, so.
Right, and, and I'll just close with, yeah, let's, we're all, we're committed to, to moving this thing forward. And for me, when I saw one point eight million dollars and not one dollar to the softball field, I said, you know what? Now's a good time. Let's, let's have this conversation. Town manager will, will do some work for us, and let's keep the conversation going. Even if we're not happy with the timeline presented, let's get the timeline out there so that the public knows and the, the, the athletic, um, groups know that we're, we're working on it. So, that's all, and I, I appreciate everyone's patience with this.
And that's all I have, Madam Chair.
Um, Mr. Town Manager, uh, were you gonna mention a change in staff tonight?
Uh, she has one more meeting with us.
Oh, one more?
She has one more. But since you've already let the cat out of the bag, Madam Chair.
I'm so sorry.
I was gonna wait to the, I was gonna wait, uh, to the last meeting, but, um, I am, uh, pretty upset to have to announce, although great for her. Um, and to no great surprise, Linda and I have known each other for thirty-plus years. She worked for me for twenty-five years, and probably the best thing that happened in my career. But that being said, um, she is planning on moving to Wisconsin, where her beloved granddaughter is, and she's gonna be living in the same neighborhood as, uh, as her grand, granddaughter. So, um, we all wish, obviously, the administration, Kathy and I have already been depressed over this, but, um, we will, we will try and find people to do what, what Linda does, but we will never find anybody to replace Linda. That being said, on a personal note, and obviously, uh, to notify the council that, uh, the twenty-eighth will be Linda's last meeting with us. Um, and unless, of course, we can wrangle her and do a couple of, uh, streaming meetings for us from Wisconsin. But anyway, that being said, um, publicly, Linda, I know I did so to the Board of Finance already with you, but thank you for all the years, the thirty-five plus years you put in with the town of Southington, and you'd be great.
I'm sorry, Linda, that request is denied.
Sorry. See you next meeting. So, next meeting, I'm not gonna say a word about you.
Well, well, you know how much we appreciate you, Linda, after all these years, and, uh, and you deserve this wonderful time with your family. Even though Mark's crying every day, but we'll have to put up with it. But thank you so much, Mr. Town Manager. Uh, let's move on to our town's attorney's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just have one, uh, item under my agenda today. Um, this is an item that usually doesn't come in front of you guys. Um, okay, sorry. This used item that doesn't come under you as a separate agenda item, but on May twentieth, two thousand twenty, uh, Festival Fun Parks, which is the owner of Lake Compounds, filed a, a tax appeal against the town of Bristol and the town of Southington. In two separate suits, but they kind of work together, obviously, because it's both ownership of, uh, Lake Compounds. Um, and basically, we've come to a stipulated, uh, agreement after speaking with, uh, Bristol Council as well as our tax assessor, um, for the grand list of two thousand nineteen, uh, to abate some taxes as well as, um, push, uh, assessment on this theme ride, which is the Venus Vortex, um, which was supposed to be on the grand list of two thousand twenty, but because of COVID, uh, work on that and completion of that was delayed. So, we agreed to push that, um, to the grand list of two thousand twenty-one, because it wasn't operational during that time. And, um, that's something that, um, is in agreement with the town of Bristol as well. So, why it's in front of you today is this agreement is under a special statute that's set up for amusement parks in the Connecticut General Statute, which is, uh, twelve dash eighty-one P, and that, uh, requires that it come in front of you for approval of this. Um, like I said, this is not something, these, uh, agreements usually don't come in front of you guys as a separate item, but that is the only reason why it's coming from you, because of that, uh, statute requires that.
Anybody have any questions of the county attorney's?
Sure. So, um, what if we didn't agree? Is this already signed in a stipulation of the court?
No, it isn't. Right now, this is, this has to pass through you guys first to be able to go through there.
I mean, is this something that we would typically, it's just, is it something we would typically agree to? Like, do we have any choice?
Usually these, uh, kind of legal settlements don't come in front of you guys. Um, but this one, because it's under a separate amusement park statute that's set up only actually for any amusement parks that are over two hundred acres, that have been run continuously for a hundred years, and that are considered historic. Uh, the General Assembly decided to, um, make a public act in nineteen ninety-four, just to carve out this little niche. So, it was just, to be honest with you, illegal strategy between us and the Bristol, uh, council to put it under this statute and come before you.
So, just for clarification, Jeremy, so is the reason that the tax abatement is occurring is because there was, there was equipment that was going to be taxed and installed earlier that wasn't installed? And because of COVID delaying that installation, they, they've asked for relief on that? Can, can you just give a little bit more detail on the why?
That's one part of it. That, that is one of the two parts of it. The other one is, um, basically, we get a lot of tax assessment appeals that come through. Um, and basically, the, the, um, rationale for this one is that some of the equipment was depreciated, uh, amusement equipment depreciates sometimes differently than regular equipment because of just the, the nature of it. So, uh, they challenged our, um, our assessment of it, and we came to this settlement with them, which we thought was a fair agreement.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, Chris. I was gonna ask very similar to Paul, so, I, I mean, that's what I heard too, Paul. I thought what you're saying, Jeremy, is that this is simply, they're asking for a delay due to COVID, the fact that it wasn't on the tax roll a certain date. It, that's kind of what I believe too, is that.
We were gonna put it on the two thousand twenty tax roll initially, because it was supposed to be completed. It was, most of it was up, but it wasn't operational due to, uh, delays because of COVID. So, we really weren't going to tax something that wasn't operational.
Right, so it sounds pretty reasonable to me, is my point, and I think that's what Paul was saying too. It sounds like they're asking for us to consider delaying it because they couldn't do what they needed to do due to COVID restrictions.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, Attorney Taylor, so that ride didn't run last summer at all?
No, it didn't.
Still, uh, I mean, parts of it is.
I kinda looked it up today. It looks amazing what it's gonna be, but it's this giant Venus flytrap waterslide or something.
They're very excited to get it going. Paul and I were at the, uh, the one hundred seventy-fifth anniversary a couple weeks ago. They're excited to get it going, but it's still not operational yet.
Yes, um, do, do you think the council needs to take a trip there to test them? Now, I, uh, my question is, uh, to Councilman Palmaris' comment, that we're not just abating it because of COVID. We're abating it because there was a statute put in place by the state. That's why we're able to do this.
Yes.
Where, this is, there's nothing really, um, that, just because we want to do it. I think that's important to put out there. The, and I may have missed it, so I apologize, but how long does this abate, does this go into the future? How long of an?
No, this is just for the two thousand nineteen grand list of personal property. Just that one year. Nothing to do with real estate, uh, you know, assessments or anything like that.
And, and is there a dollar amount associated with this approval?
There is. This, uh, it's, ends up being twenty-five thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars.
And that's, I'll just reiterate, that's just a one-time abatement.
That's the one-time abatement.
I have a question. So, this is the twenty twenty case, twenty nineteen grand list. There's a twenty twenty-one case, which I not asked for comment on, but that's, this, that's stip for that case, that case, the twenty-one, twenty twenty-one case is not impacted by this?
No, not at all.
So, how, so how does that work? I guess this is what I was wondering. So, you have, uh, a business that's in two towns. I know if you have a piece of real property that's in two towns, it's easy to figure out. Um, and more kind of just informational. So, what if they wanna park their trucks on the Southington side to tax the law? How, can they gain anything like that, or is it where your, you know, where your address is, things like that?
To be honest, Bill, I probably have to talk to the tax assessor about that. Uh.
Cause it seems like twenty twenty-one case kinda seems like the entire way they're being taxed wrong. I was just curious.
I could, I could just say for, there are several, uh, that's the only large, major one. I could say from past experience that the two assessors work together. Uh, Science and Bristol work very closely together when it comes to Lake Compounds, whether it be the Health District or whether it be the Assessor's Office. So, they come to agreements that are equitable to both towns.
It's interesting. Then, Madam Chair, I just wanna remind everyone, I'm sure everyone knows, that Lake Compounds is, is a good neighbor for Southington and generates a lot of revenue for the town. A lot of people come through. Um, and they stay in our hotels, and they eat at our restaurants, and they shop at our convenience stores and our stores, so.
I just have one more question. Are, are we by any means setting a precedent by, with this abatement?
No, we, we always take these on a year-to-year basis. So, that's why we wanna make sure in this stipulation, this is only for the two thousand nineteen grand list. If they want to appeal, uh, next year's or something else like that, obviously, they're free to do it just as any other businesses. Thank you.
Alright, uh, thank you, uh, uh, Mr. Town, anybody else?
I think we may, when you're ready, I think we may be ready.
Are we ready to roll?
Business?
Okay, um, I, I, yeah, okay, well, let's do that then. Let's hear the presentation. I know you're waiting so patiently, uh, to make a comment, but.
You shouldn't die for the presentation energy, that's.
But let's get through this presentation, and we'll be glad to open it up for you.
Good, Matt, you're on.
Can you hear us? There we go.
Matt never sounded so good.
I don't think there's anything more uniquely frustrating for, for listeners than waiting for audio to kick in. So, I thank you all for being very patient, and, uh, unfortunately, missed me singing a few bars of a song earlier. Like, you're lost. Um, some very conscious time. I appreciate I was already asked to move quickly, and now we have lost some time. So, I'm gonna go through it. I think most of the folks have had their documents a pre-read. Um, so I'll touch on the, the key points, and that way I'll, I'll stick to their request to, to be, uh, uh, efficient on time. So, let's start with the electric. Um, you're gonna hear a common theme, which is over the last fourteen months, as Mark said, we've worked very closely with the town, have great support from the town manager and the town engineer, who systematically look at a lot of the structural kind of cost basis you've got in the town, and make sure that we were timing the market correctly, um, and being thoughtful about keeping, you know, keeping the town out of, out of the risk. Um, so in terms of the electric, um, you know, in terms of the usage, you know, I had a good discussion with Sherry over the, the Board of Education at this. I think, you know, the, the, the patterns and usage tra, changes are very much driven by the pandemic. So, where the town has had reductions, where you've had, um, you know, certain building closures or folks work from home. In the Board of Education in particular, you've had very, very high, um, cycling and of the air and conditioning of the building. So, when, uh, Sherry and I looked at it, it was, um, I think in September and October alone, there was thirty percent more usage just in those two months, uh, because the facilities team there were doing a fantastic job keeping constant airflow, air intake, and conditioning the building. So, the usage, you know, in any given year would look very abnormal, uh, but given the context of the building usage and the air circulation, uh, nothing stands out there to us. In terms of the procurement, um, you know, we had very good support and partnership with, uh, again, the, you know, the town manager and, uh, the finance team, the town engineer to look at the cost. Um, we went through a competitive aggregate auction, um, a number of times, and in April twenty twenty, which if you cast your mind back, right, was about a month or so into, let's call it the lockdown period of COVID, we were able to secure frankly some very, you know, vast discounts on the electric. So, the town and the Board of Education received about eighteen percent reduction, the water.
Excuse me just a second. Could you speak up a little bit? It's kind of muffled. Your, your sound is.
I think when he turns his head, Madam Chair, we're not getting everything, so I think he has to talk into the laptop.
If you could talk more into your laptop, and are you planning on sharing your presentation, uh, on the screen?
I can do that. That helps. I apologize. I thought you guys had it in advance. One second, please?
We do have it in advance, but the public also needs to see it, Matt.
Got it. Did that come through?
There you go.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Um, so on the second slide, uh, second table on that slide, you can see the reductions that I've mentioned there. Um, the other aspect of this that's good is that the, you know, and this comes into relevance, as we saw in February in, you know, up and down the West Coast with the, you know, the bad weather. Making sure the counterparty you're in a deal with is, is, is quite key. So, the, uh, deals are split between NG, uh, the majority owner of NG is the French government. They're a global five hundred energy company. Um, and then the other provider is Direct Energy. They were recently acquired by, uh, NRG, which is a Fortune five hundred company, and that acquisition price was, I think, three point four billion. So, the, you know, very financially beneficial rates, and then just as importantly, the counterparties that have to honor those rates have high credit, uh, uh, counterparty worthiness. That's the electric. I'll keep going in the interest of, of time as requested. In terms of natural gas, as I, as I just mentioned, what we had in, in January through March in particular, the winter just gone, um, was, you know, one of the coldest winters we've had on, you know, recent records. The, if we compare seasonal normal temperatures, you know, between the period of, you know, nineteen eighty and twenty-ten, um, that period was eleven degrees colder than average. That meant, you know, any building that had kind of thermal, particularly kind of, you know, public heating requirements, had very high usage. And so, again, with these, you know, with that context, given what we've seen in the market, um, there is no cause for alarm, you know, on that, uh, natural gas usage, based on our discussions we've had with, um, you know, some of the, the, the town and board folks. Um, it's all, it's all weather-driven. Nothing out of, you know, out of kilter there. Historically, the, the town and, you know, the other buying entities have taken their natural gas supply directly from a utility default service. The competitive market has not offered a discount. Uh, given some of the run-up we've seen, uh, recently in the market, we're gonna go ahead and, you know, run what I think will be the third, uh, market test in about three years to see if there are savings to be had, and we'll circle back again on that. In terms of fuel supply, um, believe it or not, in the last fourteen months, we've done, uh, two procurements. The first one again was April twenty, uh, thinking back, you know, again, that was about one month into the kind of, you know, lockdown, you know, portion of the pandemic. And this is where we saw, you know, crude oil, uh, you know, Brent, um, really kind of come down to pretty much historic lows. And in some kind of market spot prices, they even went negative at one point. And then when we locked that down, we were very, you know, you know, opportunistic, to put it bluntly. Um, and those rate reductions were about a third, you know, reduction. Uh, since then, we've seen, and we expected this, and we had good, you know, again, you know, you know, good partnership with the, the town here. The decision was made because of the risk and market liquidity, you know, changes that we would lock down the next round, uh, two years, although obviously that was a big increase from, um, that historic low. Um, as you can see from this benchmark, with pump prices now at a seven-year-high, and Brent crude today hit an, I think it's a three-year-high, the town pricing for fuels has hit very well. Um, to put it in perspective, the new pricing on eighty-nine octane is just over two dollars. The kind of public, you know, price of the pumps is north of three dollars. So, again, you know, despite that kind of, you know, contract-to-contract increase, you know, because of that timing difference when we procured the last one, and what's happened to the market since, uh, the town is in a very good, you know, fixed rate there. Um, and the counterparty there is, uh, the same, you know, local provider that's been providing the town for about five or, five or six years. That's the fuel supply update. Switching over to this solar performance, um, you know, there are currently five of the Board of Education properties that are physically hosting solar. This solar generates electricity on a non-dispatchable basis, which means when the sun shines and there aren't, there isn't cloud cover, you know, the solar panels will produce KWH. If the school has a has a load need, a demand for it, it will use it itself, if not, it gets net metered and sold back to the grid. Um as a as an offset to the next round of kilowatt hours that come, you know, after net metering. So far in terms of what was produced in the last review versus now, uh because of the, you know, particularly because of the weather, but frankly because of uh just system maturity, we've seen very positive avoided costs, you can see most of these are, you know, strong five-figure avoided cost, you know, more than the business case suggested at the time, so good, you know, good production from the school's assets there. In terms of other assets or other investments, you guys will recall that um, you know, a number of years ago, um you had a contract for an EPC, an energy performance contract, where the town, you know, raised uh money by way of loan note, I think they had a contract price just north of thirteen dollars for a number of items that were ECMs or energy conservation. This is things like, you know, changing the streetlights out to LEDs right through to doing upgrades of the heating and ventilation systems in certain buildings. The contract had a guaranteed savings and each year, Naresco and your owner's rep ECG produces a report that they share with us as your energy consultant for our review. The structure and let us have a look at what it's done in terms of the kilowatt hour as well as the financials. Current year's report, which is the year through July twenty, is on screen and it has hit, you know, exactly, you know, within point one percent of the guaranteed savings. Um which means that, you know, in the uh in the period through July twenty twenty, there's already been a recoup of three point nine million dollars. Uh the next, you know, report from then will be available, you know, in around October or November coming up this calendar year. Again, conscious of time, just gonna carry on moving through. So the other kind of longstanding project the town has is a uh waste to power conversion opportunities, the town did not pay for the capital for this, they don't own the project. But it is what's called a beneficial account, which means that the grid uh matches up the kilowatt hours produced that's left over from that net export and financially matches it to the town and the town is a contractual buyer for a certain amount of that of that credit. Historically, this is providing anywhere from, you know, twenty five to fifty thousand dollars worth of, you know, financial credits, you know, net to the town every year. The last year it was uh, you know, much less material, so it's less than five K. Uh we have, you know, followed up and had discussions, you know, with the production host as to what the difference is. And it's really two things, again, you know, in the interest of time, I'll I'll keep it brief, the first thing is that in terms of the, you know, the food to waste, you know, waste to energy farm, um a lot of the incoming waste is from uh commercial or educational facilities, so local restaurants, uh local universities and colleges. And the food waste that they've had in terms of their raw material to make their energy has declined over that period, you know, anywhere from, you know, about third. And that's really how can hit that hit their ability to produce energy. Uh second of all, um the site itself has higher electric demands, which means it's got less net to export out. So there's been, you know, a a high, you know, quite a large decline in the amount of credits that have come out to the town's benefit. Now, as a as a follow-up to that, the the host and the owner is looking into other other technologies or other ways it can expand that and make sure there is more consistent production. And they will be intending on making a proposal to the town through the energy consultants ourselves in the coming months to see if there is, you know, a willingness to kind of look at that. We'll look at that in regard to the contractual rights you guys have at that time, um as well as the financial commitments to see if if, you know, any expansion they do is of interest to you. So that one, a little bit disappointing on some context, but we want to make sure that it's a one-off and nothing more. Again, conscious of time, um just moving right along, uh the other large project that the town have done in the last year or two was to bring on a fuel cell. So a fuel cell is a non-combustion technology, so unlike a, say for example, a car engine that, you know, burns and combusts, um uh an input fuel, in this case, natural gas, um to produce energy, it has more of a chemical reaction. That means there's a huge amount of um uh efficiency there in terms of the types of waste, um greenhouse gases and small cars and gases that come out of it. Far fewer, you know, what are called NOCs and SOCs, uh emissions. Um and frankly, it's been a good financial business case for the town, so yes, it's the right thing to have done environmentally and gets you much more stable power site without having to worry about, you know, you know, grid interruptions. Um but the financial case has been, you know, very, very strong, we've created some net avoided aspects, it looks to be about, you know, ten percent better than the initial business case was. We're awaiting feedback from the provider balloon to verify our numbers and assumptions in terms of that gas consumption. But so far in terms of that, you know, the first, you know, half a year of performance, uh the fuel cell has come on on producing very well, so congratulations to. Um and then lastly, in terms of other aspects, you know, as I mentioned earlier on in the call, we will be looking for the, I think, the third time to look at if there are, you know, market fixed rates on natural gas that could save, you know, that could or could be likely to save the town, you know, money versus buying the default rate. On the last three, you know, two or three looks, it hasn't proven to be worthwhile, that said, as we've all seen, there's been a huge amount of volatility in commodities and raw input costs and natural gas is not an exception. So it means in in the last, you know, few years where, you know, we've had a historically push, you know, pushing down of commodities, particularly driven by shale and some of the other kind of, you know, natural phenomena that's happening in terms of extraction in the US. Has benefited benefited all markets, now with a lot of speculation and then uh belief that demand and weather patterns will cause those prices to go up, it's time for us to look again. Um obviously, the town won't, you know, won't have a deal walked in on that behalf, we'll do the findings and present them through to the town manager and that team and make a decision. The other aspects is very broadly are, there are a number of other projects, so with the the state of Connecticut pushing what it calls the uh renewable portfolio standard, you know, up each year, which is the amount of generation that needs to be from renewable sources. Um like some of the projects that the town has already done, has been a leader on, there are more opportunities that the town gets invited to. Uh we continue to review these very, very closely with the team to see if they make any sense. You know, before the next, you know, annual update, uh we think there's likely to be a a project that would look for approval, um if the economics pass muster and it independently gets the approvals it requires or no more by then. Um and then lastly, we understand and and are continually challenged, um you know, by the town, which is the right thing to do around. Each time there is a new building commissioned, we should continue to look at, as we have done in the past, whether new technologies, especially solar, can make financial sense. We continue with, you know, default and delivery rates continuing to go up, um they do. When we, you know, benchmark the the rates that the town is paying against the EIA averages for commercial and industrial, you guys continue to benchmark well well below those commercial and industrial averages. But if we can, you know, push that into a more secure or more green production amount and maintain those economics, then that's a good thing, so we will continue with that. That's it, um I appreciate that uh that was a very quick canter through ten slides of lots of information, hopefully there was an opportunity for uh council and public review of the content. You know, if you are open set to having us take questions now, we can do, if you prefer questions follow-up to us in writing, then we can certainly do that.
Thank you so much for your uh for your presentation, um does anyone have any questions on the presentation at all? Um one of the things I think which is very important in all of this is that uh we as a community need to stay abreast on what's going on and um and hopefully uh we don't have to wait so long, so uh perhaps uh late in the fall, we might get an update and I think that would be really important and we continue to do it perhaps every six months rather than letting it go for any longer than that, so we can keep an eye on things. Um I thank you very, okay, go ahead Tom.
One quick comment question, uh thank you for the presentation, but so overall, it seems like the town is doing a a pretty good job on its energy uh savings and usage and how are we comparing to other municipalities that you have as a customer?
Yeah, it's um it's a good question, yes, overall, the town is doing a very good job managing the budget and most municipalities or even larger towns and it's very public, so we can talk about this, right? Uh you know, Alberta works with the government of DC, for example, um it's almost always the same pecking order, which is, you know, number one, the 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 people work with their obligation is to make sure the cost base is minimized as much as possible. Second of all, it's to um reduce and mitigate risk as much as possible to ensure there are no kind of, you know, you know, financial uh or other shocks to it. Thirdly, I think increasingly, we're we're hearing a much more ESG, um kind of environmental, social kind of aspect of what we do. And therefore, you know, having energy generated, you know, close to the the demand source as well as having more green energy, um you know, you know, comes, you know, more key. As I mentioned, Connecticut has a, as I'd say, a probably a second quartile, um not quite first quartile, um you know, view to RPS, which is at the moment, you know, including all production types, about thirty percent of the energy that the town uses, you know, must be green. Um it's already does that through its supply contract and then the town has done over, you know, above and beyond in terms of supporting, um you know, localized projects, being the onsite solar, um as well as the beneficial accounts for, you know, fuel cells and and, you know, waste waste of power, so in that aspect, you're above, you know, you know, above the state mandates by quite a long way and the state is already, I'd say, in the second quartile, I it's not as aggressive as, say, Rhode Island or DC or or Maryland or California, which have one hundred percent goals by, you know, a date certain, um but it's certainly up there, so I'd say in terms of the the, you know, larger as well as smaller organizations work with, they have those similar kind of pecking order of needs, right, kind of budget, risk, green, I think you guys benchmark uh very, very well. Yeah.
Well, thank you very much.
Yep.
Thank you so much, we appreciate it, can we turn the lights on, uh we're gonna move on, thank you so much.
Thanks, Madam.
And uh take care, we'll talk to you soon. Okay, let's move on, please, let's uh invite the public, you've been very patient and I appreciate that so much. But please uh come to the podium, you'll have five minutes to speak to the council and we promise we will listen. Um please state your name and address, you must be a Southington resident and uh please come up, sure.
Were you at the pool party last night?
Nope.
For the the members, like, as you said that you had gone and you had served everything at the Farming Berry Drive.
I I just received an email.
Oh, you just.
It was email communication.
Oh, email.
The pool party?
No, I was looking at that.
After we went on the roller coaster.
Well, the neighbors were all there at the pool party and I was gonna say, if he was there, he was talking with all the neighbors, he should have come and talked to me too, right, you know, transparency.
They they emailed the council, they emailed the full council today.
Okay, wonderful, wonderful, I was hoping he would be here tonight, because I believe in conversation where we all talk, instead of this go behind the back.
Name and address, please ma'am, I'm sorry, name and address.
I'm sorry, I'm Sandra Janega, this is my husband, Robert Janega. I'm retired, he is a school teacher at Wilcox Technical School in Meriden, so I'm shocked he's here for support, um because he coaches, so you know what that's like. But um we live on thirty three Farming Berry Drive, Marion, Connecticut. And um I have written before, um I didn't know there was an issue, um nobody said anything to me until Animal Control, Josh Caravan came to visit. So then I found out from a neighbor that Mr. Rinaldi sent letters to everybody in the neighborhood to make this a big issue. So that was a shock to me, because I never received a copy of the letter. If I had a problem with a neighbor, how I handle it, I would go over and say, hey, listen, this is an issue, can we talk about it, that never occurred. So when Mr. Caravan said, do you know what this is about, I says, is it because my cats are outside, you need to see rabies or whatever, I didn't know. So I would like to respond to Mr. Rinaldi and his concerns about bears in the Farming Berry Drive area and I want to also provide some education on the matter. According to Wide Open Spaces, there are twenty five fatal black bear attacks have occurred between nineteen ninety seven and two thousand and seventeen in North America. Not just the United States, but that includes Canada. According to the NPS, the chances of being injured by a bear are about one in two point one million. Let's compare that to Mr. Rinaldi and his backyard swimming pool pastime. U S Consumer Product Safety Commission states that three hundred and ninety deaths a year on average are attributed to drowning in residential swimming pools and spots. Because we need a comparison of what bears are versus other things that we're dealing with. That is one point two five deaths per year, one death per year by bears versus residential swimming pool deaths of one per day in the United States. Should we ban all swimming pools because it's clear they are more dangerous than bears? I would hope not. Let's look into this even a little bit more. Some neighbors have dogs in the Farming Berry neighborhood, I don't, but some do, typically between thirty and fifty people in the US die from dog bites each year. Around four and a half million Americans are bitten by dogs every year versus on average of thirty two bear attacks in the US per year. As you can see, dogs are much more dangerous, I love dogs, but the facts are the facts. Should we eliminate all dogs in neighborhoods? Of course not, lastly, there are humans, they are six more times likely to kill each other than the average mammal. Hard to believe, but it's true. Fortunately, Friends for Animals in two thousand and nineteen stated there have been no human killings from black bears in Connecticut, that's a real good thing. At that time, hunting black bears for sport in the state was being considered to reduce the population. From my perspective, happily, that legislation failed to pass. I noticed that Mr. Rinaldi in a September twenty twenty town council meeting did not object when it was suggested by a town council member to think about having a bear hunting season again. The neighbors of Farming Berry Drive have a great option of improving their property values by putting up a fence. Hence, no more bear problems and everyone lives in harmonies with the bears at that point. The Janegas have established a line of fifteen seven-foot green giant hamlocks along Mr. Rinaldi's and the Janegas' property line for privacy. Unfortunately, constant photos of Sandra Janega and her family are still being taken in their yard and when I say constantly, it's daily. In my garage, photos are being taken, they're on their property, but they're being taken, my daughter, um sunbathing in our yard, photos are being taken. Um are Rinaldis trying to intimidate the Janegas? How would Mr. Rinaldi and his family feel if constant photos of them at their pool were taken on a regular basis by a neighbor? It may be currently legal to do, but it's creepy, right? Sometimes to get perspective, you need to put the shoe on the other foot. The problem with constant photo-taking is going to be addressed in a different forum if it continues. Mr. and Mrs. Rinaldi take photos of the bear when they are outside and they never want away in fright. Isn't that ironic, most people who fear for their lives don't react in that manner, they run in the house and lock the door, if I'm frightened of something, that's what I would do, a commonplace. This is the thing that's important, the Rinaldis may want to educate themselves and where bears from Woolkit and Southington are relocated if they're captured. This is important, because a common place is the reservoir across from our street, they are relocated there, okay? That's a fact, you can you can check into that, Woolkit does it and so does Southington.
Sandra, I'm gonna let you continue on for just a bit because you're right in the middle and I think it's very important since there was a question about referring this for an ordinance. So I'm gonna let you go on, is that all right with everybody, I think it's important.
Thank you, I appreciate that, everyone. So my husband knows someone in Animal Control in Meritican and Meriden and they relocate to Broadbrook Reservoir. They do the same thing, these are common practices in all states because the habitat is great for bears, our area is great for bears, plain and simple. The town council of Southington is walking on a slippery slope, if they start banning people from favorite pastimes like bird feeding, which is enjoyed by over fifty five million people in the US. Yes, Mr. Rinaldi, because I know you'll look at this, fifty five million people like me do feed and watch the birds, I'm not alone in this. But if the town council eliminates feeding the birds in the spring and summer, you deprive people of seeing northern orioles, rose-breasted grosbeaks, catbirds and the goldfinch in full color, among many other birds. How would Mr. Rinaldi like being restricted to using his pole only in the winter months? I have reduced my number of feeders and now bring the feeders in each night, obviously, there is no compromise on Mr. Rinaldi's behalf, which reflects to me that there is something personal in nature here and it's not about bears. I've been feeding the wild birds for twenty one years at this property and it has never been an issue and now it is. So something's going on, but I don't know what it is because we have had no communication at all. Did you know that a single bear eats thirteen to eighteen pounds of food a day? Literally, if I was supporting the bears, I would be going broke. If Southington bans bird feeding, property rights will be whittled away once again, how do we start determining what hobby is more important? What happens if a golf ball hits a window of a home on a golf course, do we shut the golf course down because the homeowner is unhappy? We have to all learn to live together. It starts to become political at that point, and outcomes are determined by who's in power at that time. Don't we have enough of that already? Why aren't we communicating and why aren't we trying to get along? But it's just not happening. Everything is being done behind my back. And just for the record, my property, nobody can see in my backyard besides Mr. Rinaldi. So everybody else who says anything about my backyard, there's no way they could know unless they're trespassing. Woods are behind my whole property line. So you have to take this whole thing in perspective. I still talk to all my neighbors, but not one has come to me to say anything. And I think they're afraid of intimidation. And that's kind of sad, that we can't all work through this together. But, I mean, the bears are going to be there. When we retire to move to South Carolina, guess what? They're still going to be there. And I'm glad you brought up the ordinances, because Canton, Simsbury, some of the other towns have tried to do this. And they stopped bird feeding. Guess what? The bears are still there. It hasn't changed a single thing, which is unfortunate. You know, so should I have used proper, better feeding habits? Probably. But I talked with Josh. He told me and gave me some suggestions, things to do. And I did them, but it's still not satisfactory. And I can be honest with you, you can talk to the last, because he calls Animal Control on me all the time. He's called Dee, he's called everybody. So you can talk to the last, it wasn't Josh, it was a young lady who came. And she said, I came home from Costco, I put my bird feeders out. She was at my door within 10 minutes. And I says, that's interesting. I just put my bird feeders out, so I'm being watched. And she says, well, can I see them? And I said, yeah. And she goes, this is fine. I says, but let me tell you why I feed the birds. I says, I get northern orioles only in the month of May. Sure enough, we're standing there and here comes in four orioles. And the beautiful color that they have. This isn't for everybody, but it's my passion. I even trained at Cornell University. And if you remember old Evergreen Nursery, I know it's closed now. I did wild bird feeding seminars on talking about the birds there. And we had 150 people. I used to do places like Vinnie's Garden, and I would talk to a thousand. So this isn't something that's a tit for tat. This is something that I've done my whole life since I was three years old.
Sandra, I'm going to stop you here, but thank you so much. I know there's another perspective on this situation.
And I wish they were here to talk about it.
Well, and you and I have spoken before, and I've spoken to Josh. And so, from last year. So I wanted just to give you an opportunity, because we have all of this stuff written. Mr. Rinaldi has given a very thorough informational kind of stuff. Yeah, of course. We're going to submit it right to the record. Kathy, we'll make sure that you get copies of everything. And we'll put it right in a minute. It's okay?
Because there's always two sides to every story, and I get that, you know what I mean? But I wish we could just all be here and kind of like hash it out, but that's just.
We appreciate your time and waiting. I know tonight was a long meeting, and you've got to teach in the morning, so. So thank you. Yes, Paul?
And I think I was the one who made the suggestion about bear hunting. The population in the past, I mean, it is a, you know, population control is, population management is something that is regularly done by states and municipalities all over the United States. Yeah, that wasn't the point. But my point was, I for one will not support an ordinance that restricts people from feeding birds. Period. I mean, it's, people have a right to use their property. And, you know, you're living in a rural area. You know, I understand what you're saying about feeding the birds. It sounds like you're going above and beyond to, you know, to try to make good neighbors. So that's, I applaud you for doing that and listening to some of the feedback from the neighbors and the town who have come out and offered some guidance. So thank you for that, but I have no, I just, I don't see the need for an ordinance at this time, ma'am.
All right, we're not going to discuss this right now, because we have other people wanting to make comments. So is there anyone else that would like to speak to us? No. How about online, on WebEx? Is there anyone who wishes to speak to us? If you do, Jay will bring you in. Anyone?
Yeah, I'd like to speak.
Okay, could you identify yourself, please?
Sure. My name is Tom Catrakala, 204 Stonegate Road. I'm calling regarding the town attorney's report regarding the option to abate property taxes. I did have, I read this on the agenda, and I did have an inkling it was related to Lake Compounds. And I'm glad one of the town council members brought up that Southington is, excuse me, Lake Compounds is a huge boon to Southington. Not only that, they make a lot of money. They are owned by a giant corporation that owns 40 other amusement parks. And reading this on the agenda, what I immediately thought was this sounds like a giant corporation trying to avoid taxes. I appreciate the town attorney's explanation regarding, you guys came to a decision. I'd love to know how you guys came to that decision. It seems like there were a lot of moving parts. And I'll totally honest, a lot of that will probably go over my head. But the way I see it is, Lake Compounds owns the property regardless of whether or not they were able to make a profit off of it this past year. If they own the property, they should be paying the property taxes. Again, this is a multimillion dollar company. They own a ton of property. My concern, as other town council members brought up, that this could become a habit. And my greater concern is that the tax abatement will be offset by the rest of the taxpayers in Southington. So again, I appreciate the town attorney's explanation. It did answer a lot of my questions, but just caution against turning this into a habit, because that cost will inevitably be transferred onto the taxpayers, because I don't think people are going to be looking at raising taxes on Southington. And just one more point, Southington isn't going anywhere. I would recommend the, excuse me, Lake Compounds is not going anywhere. I would recommend the town of Southington work with the town of Bristol to get this giant company to pay their taxes. I know they've had a history of avoiding taxes, I know in the late 90s. So please, work with them to get them to pay their fair share. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on the computer calls? Anyone else? Could you just double check, Jay, make sure there's nobody trying to get on? No? Okay. We'll be moving right on. Thank you so much, everyone who spoke tonight. Let's get right into old business. Item A, action on the report of the Board of Finance. Okay, wait, Mike, Mike had started to say something.
That's okay. Just motion to approve it.
Very good. Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
DePaolo?
Yes.
Dietzick?
Yes.
Lombardi?
Yes.
Morelli? Almerai?
Yes.
Hulus?
Yes.
Chaplinsky?
Yes.
Del Santo?
Yes.
Triano?
Yes. Item B, action on the municipal option to abate the property tax for Lake Compounds. And it has to do with that one particular ride or one particular item, right? Is it from 2019?
No, it's two distinct things. It's, one is the Venus vortex that's just going to be pushed from 2020 to 2021. And then the abatement for the 2019 of that 25/7/15. And just want to make a point that it's personal property. It has nothing to do with real estate taxes.
Do they have to be voted on separately, Mr. Taylor?
No, they're all part of it.
I'll make a motion, Madam Chair, to approve.
So we have a motion to approve, is there a second? Somebody said it, I'm sorry. Jim? Okay, is there any discussion on this?
Okay. So it doesn't sound like that this is something that the, that they meaning Lake Compounds does often. I mean, is this?
I don't, to be honest with you, I don't know the history of it, as I've only been the town attorney for two years.
I'm just thinking other councils, like, is this something that's up?
I don't remember them ever coming here for an abatement.
You know, because I know there was some concern.
The gentleman mentioned in the 90s, if you remember correctly, the, I was involved a little bit back then. And there was a major issue. They were, it was going to close. So Bristol and Southington worked very closely with Lake Compounds to keep it alive. It was owned by Hershey Park, I believe, at the time. And so what happened was, yes, there was a large forgiveness of taxes, both on Southington and Bristol's park. But in my humble opinion, the recommendations we gave the council back then were actually quite good, because I understand it did not bode well, because we did forgive a bunch of taxes. But on the other hand, it's still operating, so. So I was, I was involved in that. That was back in the early 90s, if I recall.
Very good. Any other discussion?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I just want to reiterate that the tax abatement statute is a state statute that was sent to us, section 1281. So we are not making this up. I mentioned it earlier, but we are not bringing this up and we are not initiating it. This is just something that Lake Compounds found in the statute. And whatever avenue it went, it ended up as a court case, and we're voting on it this evening. So the public's, the individuals' comments were well taken, but I think we did address a lot of those issues.
Very good. Anybody else? I'm going to, I'm sorry, go ahead, Jim.
I think it's a very fair resolution.
Madam Clerk, I'm going to ask for a voice vote on this, because it involves money.
DePaolo?
Yes.
Dietzick?
Yes.
Lombardi?
Yes.
Morelli?
Yes.
Almerai?
Yes.
Hulus?
Yes.
Chaplinsky?
Yes.
Del Santo?
Yes.
Triano?
Yes. Very good. Thank you, everybody. It passes unanimously. New business tax refunds. Val, would you like to do the honors today?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we accept the, or approve the tax refunds that are outlined in our packet.
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion on these? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, it passes unanimously this evening. Thank you. I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed can stay. Thank you, everybody. Good meeting. Thank you.
Chairman, I do believe, thanks to both Paul and Jay, I know it was a little bit shaky, but I believe all those issues are behind us now. So we'll continue this way for the public hearing for the next meeting with your permission.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, very good.
And after that, the governor's orders will all go by the wayside, so we'll see what we want to do after that.
Yeah. Sandra?